The TC Freeze, located in Monazuma, Indiana. We offer over thirty-two soft-serve flavors of creamy delicious ice cream. Ham-breaded pork tenderloin. Famous homemade pony sauce. And don't forget our roasted chicken. Open Tuesday through Sunday, ten thirty to nine thirty. To place an order, call seven six five two four five two eight eight seven. We appreciate your business.
Thank you.
Surprise, surprise, you never know what they got up their sleeve.
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Men's of previous meetings, about two fifteen and three seven of this year, everybody got their copies? Is there any additions, corrections, changes, anything anybody want to talk about?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the fifteenth and the seventh tomorrow.
Second.
Home favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, claims and warrants. End of month, February twenty twenty-four, one hundred ninety-four thousand four hundred sixty-seven dollars and sixty-one cents. And March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four meeting, three hundred sixty-three thousand fifty-one dollars and eighty-one cents. Motion approved, though?
I'll make a motion to approve the claims and warrants.
I'll second that.
Home favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Separate motion, we get a claim from industrial supply, three twenty-six, twenty-four meeting, six hundred ninety-three dollars and eighty-seven cents.
I'll make a motion to approve the industrial supply claim for six ninety-three, eight and seven.
And I second.
And I will abstain.
Home favor?
Aye.
Payroll warrants. Two twenty-four, two twenty-nine, three seven, three twenty-four, three twenty-one, in the amount of forty-three thousand two two hundred and two dollars and fifty-six cents.
I'll make a motion to fix up the payroll warrants.
I'll second that.
Home favor?
Aye.
Okay, bank reconciliations for the end of month. February twenty twenty-four, utilities, two million nine hundred and ten thousand five hundred forty-two dollars and thirty-six cents. The town, eight hundred sixty-four thousand one hundred and sixteen dollars and ten cents. Payroll, two thousand seven hundred sixty-five dollars and twenty-eight cents. And testament deposit, thirty-six thousand two hundred and forty dollars.
I'll make a motion, we approve the bank reconciliations for February twenty twenty-four.
I'll second that.
Home favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we got one billing adjustment for a dollar and twenty-nine cents for a long meter credit.
I'll make a motion to approve the long meter credit for a dollar twenty-nine.
I'll second that.
Home favor?
Aye.
Aye.
My goodness.
You don't want this one passing it down?
He forgot.
You forgot that, that's just weird.
Oh.
Lucky winner.
Yeah.
What was this Kathy, is that not something passed right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's kind of stolen me. I guess I am. Might have something to do with it.
Give me that one.
Yeah. Which one is that?
This is what he don't say.
Oh, they're all sticky, she's got it. She's on it.
We got a paperwork to be approved for wastewater system improvements projects. I'll sign them with approval when Kathy will test them. The AMP certification, SRF application, PPR acceptance resolution, signatory authorization resolution, and letter to be submitted to the SPRF.
John has to sign this.
Okay. I have a motion to approve these.
I'll make a motion to approve all of the applications and resolutions and the letter.
I'll second.
Home favor?
Aye.
Just gotten your life away.
Okay, we got two invoices to sign from HWC one four. Twenty twenty-three, two one nine F, six zeros and seven, the amount of forty-five thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars. And we got one from HWC wastewater system PPR invoice, two oh two three dash three eight seven dash F, eight seven zeros and a one, in the amount of twelve thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars.
Separate.
It can be seen, Kevin.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the invoices from HWC for the water treatment facility and the wastewater system.
I'll second that.
Home favor?
Aye.
You have to sign them?
No, you don't have to sign the invoice, it's just approved.
All right. Take care of that. Okay. Brad, are you gonna talk about John's utilities? Okay. Not the police, right? Okay. Everybody got John's email? Is there any questions? We had fifty-nine calls, felony arrests for misdemeanor arrests, seven citations, seven warnings, ten. Had three cars towed on one sixty-nine Plum Street. TJ Persinger resigned due to not being able to make his training requirements. The Durango is scheduled to for equipment install the last week of March, but he hasn't heard anything yet. The Mini split for the new garages here in aid to be installed. And he's attending street top training conference end April, early May in Orlando, which has already been approved.
Lucky dog.
Yeah. That's what I'm thinking.
Does he need a chaperone or anything?
I think he does.
Right. Yeah. Well, whatever.
I just want to state, I have it in the minutes because he asked me to, he's paid for his own transportation to there. Air flight. Amy's taking the kids down there that same week and doing their own thing, so he's gonna travel that way. He just felt like he should do it because he was flying, he's still driving.
Appreciate that. Paul?
Not tonight. I'll say this, the town's guys have done a great job cleaning up some of the brush and visibility areas and cutting some ditches and headway on a few things, and I sure appreciate it.
Yeah, I'm glad you guys out today doing some stuff, so thank you.
Thank you.
I had a question brought up to me earlier today from the neighbor behind me. Greg. And he and his wife sat out on their front porch in the swing and they'd like to see the river. And he would like to ask permission to go over on that hillside and clean some of that brush away so he's got a better sight. And the only thing we need to tell him is have at it, but there's no liabilities.
You might want to run that by Scott, too. Maybe sign a letter or...
Is it town property or the castle, or is that?
It's just north of the...
North of Red House?
Yeah.
The Red House, and it's just to the telephone pole.
Yeah.
Will he clean it up, or will he just drop it and leave it?
Well, that'll be part of the discussion.
I don't know how, you'd have to cut on top of the hill and go clear down there at the river and cut also before you have the visibility of the river.
Yeah.
I don't care if he wants to do it, but clean it up, too.
I just didn't know if it was town property or part of that property.
No, it's town property. Well, I'll contact Scott and see what he says and then make him understand that he's responsible for cleaning up.
Your thing is south of the Red House.
Yes, you're right. Yeah.
That's town property.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that, that right there was bought with, through the theme of the Red House.
Well, south of that, wouldn't that be, like, out there, out Becky and Lyle's window?
That'd be north.
That'd be north.
Oh, north, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
More north, yeah.
It'd be down further, on the other side of that.
Where Summer and Ryan's house used to be.
Okay.
The little white house that didn't live on.
Okay.
Okay, I'll contact Scott and and see if it's just verbal or if we need to get it in writing or whatever. Something like that.
No, I was just gonna say what Kathy said today, because when I seen out, they were doing a lot of work today. So.
I mean, I mean. Kathy? Just that, you need a motion on that resignation. For Tizer.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Mr. Persinger as a reserve deputy.
I'll second.
Home favor?
Aye.
All right.
Done.
Thank you, Kathy. Anything else?
Don't like it.
Brad?
You can go ahead and get these people, I gotta go. Let them get out of here.
I've already talked to one of my neighbors there about closing the...
Up front and center.
We're having an auction on April the thirteenth, downsizing due to some medical issues. And so the auctioneer had originally said he was gonna do it in our backyard, now he's saying it's not as big as he thought it was gonna be. So he wants us to close the road if possible, so he can have it out there in our parking lot. And it would just basically affect Sarah and Barb for a couple of hours.
Who you wanna call? Not Water, I hear that's true.
Sycamore.
Sycamore.
Okay.
Yeah, not Water, because it's too busy. But Sycamore, there's not that much traffic, just for a couple of hours. It would start at eleven, and then he said probably just two, three hours.
Any issues?
No, I'm, we already sailed that day, so I...
That'll free it up for people to just park.
Yeah.
Okay. Because it'll keep it off the grass, so I'm doing a motion.
I'll make a motion to close Sycamore Street on the thirteenth for an auction at Colin and Becky's.
From Water to Washington, right? Yeah. I'll second.
Home favor?
Aye.
I'll tell Barb she can move her car if she wants in and out.
Yeah, parking on Water.
She can park on there or something, you know? Or she could drive through, you know?
Barb will take care of that.
I mean, some days.
Okay. That's it?
I'm here over that pole, knocked over down there. I didn't knock it over, pulled it my truck hook into it when it's going down the alley. And I missed the power lines, but I got the telephone, telephone wire. And I got no what I'm gonna pay for, yeah, I'd take that one on Ken.
Well?
What's past practice?
Did John talk to you, because he talked to me today and stated that that pole was rotten on the bottom, it needed replaced anyway, and it was replaced with the used pole that we had. We didn't have to purchase another one. And the wiring, just the matter of putting it back out.
Pardon me? So the cable was probably hanging too low anyway. With that pole being as rotten as it was, it didn't take much for it to fall.
Now I'm gonna say it's a cable line.
Yeah, if the cable took it out.
Yeah.
Yeah, cable line. You could have brought some flour doughnuts or something to butter them up.
Okay, we'll take care of that issue.
All right, so. It's on you guys, right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
How's it, Amy? Diana?
The only thing I have is that we're getting ready for the solar eclipse and we're gonna have a big party April eighth and hope everybody can come. That's all I have, and it's nothing different.
Thank you, how are you feeling?
Good.
I came in this evening to talk about the, I feel like might be our last little thing to get through to before we can really get started, but that is the the flat work or the concrete work in the right of way. And I think, I know most of the emails I have you two gentlemen on, but I didn't know if you two ladies have seen the emails we pass back and forth about the issue or you've been to them or anything. I'll be real quick, just backstory is long time ago, months and months ago, I met Brad and Brad and John over at the property and we discussed the curbs and the sidewalks, and that's when the property lines and easements and things like that first came up. And John did have a concern then of us putting in a curb or a sidewalk and there's some utilities running underneath of it. And what if the town ever has to come work on utilities? John's thoughts was that I should be responsible for replacing it if the town, if the town worked on it. And then at the meeting we had on February twenty-second, John wasn't there, but Scott reiterated that and said, hey, John has a concern about this, he brought this up and this is our stance on it, we believe that if, if you install curb or sidewalk in the right of way for part of this business development, that anytime indefinitely in the future, the town is not responsible for fixing it. Now, that could be a little vague, what if, what if the guys hit it with a snowplow, or you know, what if you've got to dig up because of your utility broke, right? Like, that's just saying I'm responsible because of a faulty utility, but nonetheless, that was the stance on it, that was the conversation we had. After, after the meeting on February twenty-second, I did send an email to follow up just saying, hey, from, from our meeting, this is what I understood from it. Can you please confirm? I believe everybody spoke about it again, I think John followed up in email and said that you all had discussed it and the consensus was that the town still wants me to be responsible for, for everything. And first of all, I'm, I'm gonna go through just a couple more things real quick. But really, I'm here to just ask for the town's support on this. If, if, if things have changed and this is how the town views, you know, infrastructure in their right of ways and who's responsible for it or who's not. I'm just asking for support in this situation, I'm asking, I'm asking for you to not make me sign something or do something saying that I'm liable for it forever. And I'd just like the town to be responsible for their own actions or their own work, and I just want to back that up with a few things. First is I, I'll, I'll just make a, I think John's main concern when he spoke to me about it was financials, right? Oh, we've got this sewer treatment plant coming in, this big cost in the R O system and all these things, and my goodness. You developing this business is gonna cost us money. And if we have to dig that up and we've got to put concrete back, man, I don't want to have to think about bearing that cost when we're worried about nine million dollars on this or twelve million dollars on that. And that, that was how he had explained it to me. And the first thing I wanted to just say about the financials is that I wanted to try to clearly just share with you guys the financial impact that this business will have on the town. And I think we'll, we'll bring in one million to two and a half million dollars in revenue each year. And the, you know, thirty-six saloons is over three million a year, so even on my highest end, I'm like, we're not even gonna be nearly as busy as them, we just won't be as big of a place. But, you know, I just want to say for utilities, if the place is ran really, really well, six percent of our revenue would be paid to you guys in utilities. If, if, you know, it's not ran perfectly, it could get up to ten percent in utilities of total revenue. And then there's gonna be, after it's reassessed, increase in property taxes. And I'm not asking for, I'm already, well, there's gonna be a lot of money invested and dumped into this property, and I'm not asking for a tax abatement like most businesses would when they come in and develop in a, in a city or a town. You know, nothing like that, but you're gonna get at least five to seven thousand dollars increase in just property taxes each year after it's reassessed and, and everything goes into it. And I'd also, I just throw this into the factor as well as I'd really, I don't know if the town is doing this, but the one percent food and beverage tax that Rockville is doing really should be something we should push in the town, with three, when we get open three restaurants and the gas stations and everything, you could get one percent of almost all of those sales going straight to your town for you to use on whatever you want. Everybody else is doing it, and I don't know if you guys are or not, but if you take all that into consideration, let's just say on the low end, a million dollars in revenue, six percent in utilities, increased property taxes, and one percent food and beverage tax, that's seventy-five thousand dollars a year going to the town. Additional revenue just from our business opening up. Now, if it's on the good side, two and a half million in revenue, ten percent utilities, increased property taxes, and a one percent food and beverage tax, it's two hundred and eighty thousand a year additional revenue for the town just from our business opening up. And, and if you want to confirm some things like that, just talk to Dave Brown, president of the town board in Rockville. And he can share with you real numbers of the kind of money they make off of thirty-six saloon or Benjamins each year. And so as we talk about the concrete work, like, I, I do want to mention that the curb, the only thing that will be in conflict with utilities is the curb around the property. If you go by the building right now, you'll see where there's a sidewalk that comes from the man door and a sidewalk, a concrete apron coming from the, the roll-up door. Those are in place, they were in place when the sanitary sewer went in. That's wide enough for me to get my curb and sidewalk in. And when the sewer went in past there, it was never disturbed. They didn't have to mess up that concrete or nothing. And so I'm just gonna go right out to where it already is, would be my plan. And if you ever had to dig up the sewer along all that, you'd never have to disturb anything that I'm putting in, so I don't think we have to worry about anything there. The only concern is down on the very end of the block, the sanitary line goes at an angle, and if I put a curb in down to like kind of where the fire pits at, bat will go over the sanitary line in like a short little, you know, like ten or twenty foot little span there, will be, would be disturbed if you ever had to dig it up there. And so when I look at the big picture and I see, okay, seventy-five to two hundred and eighty thousand dollars additional revenue for the town each year. And you may never even have to dig it up. You know, I just don't want to have to sign something making me responsible for it, so let's just say this, say there was an, an emergency with a utility and the town had to dig it up on a Friday night. And I can't get a concrete truck till Monday morning. But my grandmother, who's eighty-three, comes for dinner that night, or someone's grandmother comes for dinner that night, eighty-three, and the town didn't patch it back because I said, hey, I guess I'll agree to it, it's my responsibility, and they fall and break a hip and fracture a skull and end up dying a few weeks later. And the town gets sued for a million bucks because they fell on a torn up curb that is in your right of way, right? So what would end up happening is that lawsuit would probably say, oh, Nathaniel said that that's his responsibility, right? He agreed to it when he put in his business. And then that would eventually roll down on me, and my, my, well, I've, I've got responses from three commercial brokers already that said if that was the situation, my claim would be denied, they wouldn't cover me because it's not on my property, it's on the town's property. And so that leads me into another thing, I just want to compare how Park County, Vigo County, Rockville, Terre Haute, NDOT, the state of Indiana, everyone across the whole state of Indiana, how they handle development in a right of way. And all this that I'm saying to you guys right now is in the emails that I, I sent. But how it's handled in the right of way, so, and also the town of Monazuma, every situation in the past inside the town of Monazuma, up to my situation right here, has been handled the complete opposite of what I'm being told.
No, you're wrong there.
Well, I'd like, can I please speak?
Well, go ahead, but you're wrong, so you can stop right there, what's been handled before, which is not that way.
You can read the whole town, and I'm not, I'm just, I'd like to just be able to speak, I'm, I'm not trying to be combative or anything, I'm just trying to speak, I'm sorry. The, the, the town ordinance manual, if you read it, there's no restrictions, you can see what's allowed in the right of way, it tells you everything, and if, if the rule was anyone who develops here has to be responsible for things in the right of way, it would stipulate that in the town ordinance, there'd have to be a resolution passed to make that possible. It wasn't that way when Dollar General was developed, okay? So Dollar General has three entrances onto their property. All three of those entrances are on the town right of ways, there was curb installed, sidewalk installed, and the concrete entrances. And multiple of those entrances have existing utilities that were already running underneath them. The best example is the water line that runs on Jefferson from the corner, all the way under the the curb sidewalks and all the way up past the, the other community building there. And so when that was developed and when First Financial Bank went in, this was never an issue, those were, so what, the way this normally happens in Terre Haute, everywhere in the state... state, even Endot, is you would look at the plans, you would say, okay, this is what they say they're gonna do, we're gonna make sure they do it the right way. And say, let's say I'm gonna, I showed you guys the plans and the specifications of how the curb would be built. You guys could inspect it and say, alright, he did it the right way. Or you could be watching me and say, he didn't put stone underneath it, or he didn't do it the right way. So then I have to tear it out and redo it until you approve it. Once you approve the work post-construction, everything that is in the town's right of way is then the responsibility of the town. So Dollar General, anything that's on the town's right of way, if the town had to come in and dig up a utility in their entrance, the town would have to patch that back and fix it. They would have to make it so semis can go in and out. If you just put stone back in there, semis are gonna eventually get stuck, caught, there's gonna be huge potlou there, and Dollar General will never fix what's in your guys' right of way, they'll never say, I'm responsible for it. And if you want to just confirm like, how these things are actually done, just call the President of the Town Board in Rockville, City of Terre Haute, the City of Terre Haute, call the Park County Commissioners, any of them, everybody will tell you like, this is the way that it's done everywhere else. Even Endot, if you just went 30 feet across my property line and you guys had to dig up your sanitary line where Water Street goes up to the highway, and you had to dig up the curb and everything there, well, you'd have to put it back. You, the town would have to put it back, you can't just leave it unrepaired. And so, all of those things, my situation is the only one that's different. And I'm not wanting to paint a bad picture here, all I'm doing is asking for the Town Board to please support me in this, please treat me the way that everyone else has been treated, don't make me sign some special deal that Dollar General, Tasty Freeze, First Financial didn't have to do, for, you know, all the new business, McDonald's in Rockville won't have to do it, the fast-paced urgent care facility in Rockville, I built that place myself. There's a town right of way and a, an Endot right of way on each side of that property. As soon it was, it was done, the sidewalk, the curbs that went in, if Dave Brown had to come dig it up for a utility, they would cut out the sidewalk and patch in a couple pieces. And that's just the way everyone around us normally does business. And the, the big sticker for me is I can't sign something or agree to say, I'll take responsibility for it, and then I'm open up to a lawsuit without insurance coverage. And that's why these things were handled in a certain way. And I just asked the Town Board to please think about it, please discuss it, please, if, if the consensus is, no Nathaniel, you're still responsible for it, then I would like, and if, if it's possible, I'd like to request a vote on it, I'd like to know which Town Board members are supporting me and which ones aren't. You know, 'cause I don't think this is a big issue, we're talking about like, a 20-foot section of curb that's all the way down at the end, I need the curb to go in to stop the water from coming off the street on, and flood in the parking lot anyway.
I do have a question on that, 'cause I drive down that road, I come in that, I live right there, so I come on that way a lot. In this whole winter, I have not saw, there's a little puddle, but that's the only water that I've ever saw standing there. So I guess that I'm questioning, what water are you talking about?
Well, so, the, I mean, if you, anything when it comes to actual laws in the state of Indiana, is that municipalities, towns, private individuals, private property owners have to be responsible for their own stormwater, so if I...
So do you have gutters on the building?
Well, I, my stormwater can stay on my property, that's fine. I, I can keep my stormwater on my property, your stormwater coming off the street onto my property is an issue.
I guess that's what I'm saying there, I've never saw any stormwater at all.
Well, I've got email to the attorneys, to everybody, showing how the water runs off the streets, it floods my parking lot. If you remember, before I put the stone in there, remember the water would fill up in that parking lot all the time, every time it would rain? I've got photos of it. And, and, and then I put the rock in and now it fills up and goes around down the back. I graded everything away from the building so the water didn't go up against the building, then placed stone. And now all the water goes down and it goes around the concrete cinder block retaining wall and was washing out the hill in the back. And that's why stormwater is an issue, because like, right now it comes up to my front door, how can I have customers coming in? And, and that's why every other business that's been developed in town has a sidewalk and a curb in front of it, and the stormwater is managed. And, and, and that's the way every other town does it too. And IDM, if you want to talk about the water issues, I mean, I really want to...
No, that was the only thing I had, that, well, that was the only thing that I had, thank you very much.
Everybody understands your stance, right?
Well, yeah, I was just asking...
Yes, we understand.
Okay, now, your statement that the way everybody else has been done is incorrect. When the school built that parking lot up there, they wanted care of the water line going up that alley. We told them, go ahead, but if anything happens to that water line, you're responsible for fixing your parking lot.
When was a resolution made to change since Dollar General went in?
The Dollar General has nothing to do with this.
It does.
No, it doesn't. That was happened, happened by a different board.
Well, I know, the details, I just want to be treated like Dollar General, I want you guys to support me in this, not making it difficult.
Okay, how do you know, now you're sitting there telling us how this is gonna happen, right?
I'm not, I'm talking, I'm asking for support.
Okay, if that water line breaks going down that street, we're gonna dig it up and fix it, the water line.
There's no water line on my side.
It has nothing to do with what I'm talking about, I'm talking about Dollar General, my pet peeve.
Okay.
If that water line broke, we would dig it up and fix it. How can you sit there and say that Dollar General will not fix that sidewalk?
They won't.
How do you know?
It's not on their property. It's not on their property. How do you know they won't? You don't.
They can leave it that way then.
Listen, I just, if the board, if, if the consensus after this is that, is that, no, we're not gonna support you, I, I want to ask for a vote and I want to know who's support me and who's not.
Well, to start with, this issue is not a voting issue.
It can be.
It does not have to be.
It can be, there's no resolution passed.
It's up to us.
There's no resolution passed in the town.
It's up to us whether we vote or not.
There's no resolution passed in the town ordinance since any of these other businesses have been, went in to make a, to change the precedent.
Now, wait a minute, I just told you one precedent, I'll tell you another one.
No, that's just words, nothing was passed, did they sign a piece of paper agreeing to it? No, that was just words.
No, they changed their parking lot.
Exactly. And I'm asking for support so we don't have to change anything.
When the Indian Baptist Church down there, put that parking lot in.
I mean, I want to bring you money each year, I want to bring 75 to 280,000 dollars to the town this year.
You guys want to vote?
Yeah, let's vote.
All right, do we leave it like it is, or do we change it for him?
We leave it like it is.
We have, I mean, that's what...
I'll make the motion.
A second. Hold on, favor?
Aye.
I mean, that's how we've done it in the new projects that have all been done.
Nathan, I can say this, that our driveway, the concrete on our driveway goes clear to the edge of the blacktop. If the town had to come through and dig that concrete up... No, let me finish. You overtalk everybody. Yes, you do.
Yes, you do.
Right there.
Yes, you do.
Now, listen, I'm trying to explain to you that we're not making exceptions. If our concrete had to be dug up in order for the town to come through and change a water line or anything, Paul and I would be responsible for replacing that concrete in our driveway.
What if somebody falls or something, who's responsible then?
That has nothing to do with it, it's our responsibility. We poured the concrete over those lines. We knew when we did, it was our responsibility to change, to replace it if it had, they had to come through. We knew that. When the town, when the school was going to put the lines down the alley over here, the superintendent was not happy. But Jay and I told him, if he poured concrete over those lines, the school would be responsible for replacing that concrete, the town would not do it. You are not the only one who has ever been told those things. So stop saying that, no.
That's not the way anybody else does it.
This is a town Monizuma, we are the town council.
And I want to say something, I want to say something else. There isn't one person in this room who doesn't want to see you succeed in building that damn restaurant.
Seems like a problem.
No, it isn't.
No, that's not true.
It's not true, we know.
We all were very supportive.
We know.
I don't even feel like I want to see you, I don't want to cook you a plate of food when I get treated like this.
Okay.
But you're trying, yes you are.
I came here asking for support.
Stop whining.
I came here asking for support.
And the answer was, no.
Stop whining, you're ready.
That's it, we're done with it.
We want it, yes you are, we're, we want that restaurant in this area.
I'm trying to work through a situation with, with individuals that aren't educated on how these things normally happen.
Then stop trying to, to tell us.
Hey, we don't need an education from you.
No.
I know you don't, I get the feeling on that, I know you feel that.
Can you hear, the answer is, we are not changing anything, it's done and over with this conversation, period.
Thank you for coming.
We all want you to build that restaurant, Nathan, we want you to succeed, it will put us on the map, but stop, just build the restaurant.
Brad, I do have one more thing about the water, if I can, because, because I didn't want to get this deep into it.
I'm sorry, but I'm tired of it.
But, no, the water is an issue, IDM, DNR, division of water.
You do what you need to do.
I know, that's what they're saying, and I didn't want it to come to this, but they've told me that there is a problem.
Well, I'm glad you don't threaten people.
But they won't stand in the way of us because you're a town and municipality. They said the only way that I can get the curb in and complain about the water issue is if I get a lawyer, and I don't want to do that.
Okay.
But we said the curb, we've already said the curb could go in, your debate is who will fix it if there's a problem.
Are you gonna make me sign something saying this?
But that's what I'm saying, it's not your backtrack and saying the problem and you're threatening with a lawyer about putting the curb in. The curb was put in a design, can I talk for a second? The curb was put into a drawing, we all talked about it. Emails have been going back and forth. The issue isn't the curb, the issue is you don't want to be responsible if something happens because it's on the right of way, which we told you from the beginning that that's where the position was. So we're not against you. The problem is, what I see and what it sounds like is, you want it done your way, and we're all saying, you can do this, but here's the stipulations to doing it. So, you don't like our answer.
I'd like to ask one thing, and I'm sorry, the, the reason I feel so defensive on this is because just a couple days after the February 22nd meeting, Scott's assistant and other attorney called me wanting to write up a piece of paper, asking for information on the town. If I don't have to sign anything and this is just something verbal and then if it gets torn up, I don't have to patch it back and I'm not responsible for it, like if somebody falls, I'm not liable for an accident in the right of way? I'll verbally agree to it with you right now. But I'm worried about a lawsuit if, 'cause if we've got 500 people coming in on a Friday night or Saturday night and somebody falls and gets hurt because something didn't get fixed quick enough. I can assume the liability...
If it's on the town property, the town is responsible for that, we're responsible for our own property.
So I don't have to sign a piece of paper saying I'm liable for it.
So the thing is, you keep saying if it's not...
I will bounce that off of Scott.
If it's not fixed fast enough, sometimes we're not gonna be able to fix something over 10 minutes for your customers to come in.
I just want to make sure I look to sue.
Is it gonna be clearly marked and blocked off to where there's no falling? Yeah, absolutely, as soon as we know there's an issue. It will have to be marked, we don't want anybody falling on any property on anywhere in your property, our property, even our home properties.
And that's been the biggest concern, that's been the biggest concern of my attorney so far as the liability.
You, you think we can guarantee you now, if somebody falls down there, they're not gonna sue you? There's no way in the world we can do that, or no way you could tell us that that wouldn't happen.
Only if I had signed something saying I was liable for it. And that's what the conversation was when Scott's assistant called me, he said, hey, we need, she said, hey, I need information, Scott wanted me to write up something about your agreement on what's in the right of way. And I said, well, hold on, I want to discuss that with the Town Board first. If I don't have to sign anything saying I'm not liable for it...
We'll talk to Scott.
I was gonna say, unfortunately, he's not here tonight.
If it's just like, hey, you guys dig it up, and then if you dig it up and I never fix it, then it just never gets fixed.
Yeah.
I'm not fighting it because then I don't, I don't lose my house if somebody tries to sue the town and I sign a document and then the town's like, hey, Nathaniel said he's a great, you know? That's the, that's the gray area that we're worried about.
We'll talk to Scott and get back with you.
We're gonna have to.
If it's just verbal and you guys just won't, I can pay to put it in, if you tear it up, you can just never put it back.
We can't give a verbal or anything, let's wait for Scott, he's not here tonight, let's get it aired out and cleared. Somebody's gonna be responsible, that, that's life, somebody's gonna, and somebody's gonna sue, that's life, unfortunately, in this society.
I'm okay if you tear it up and don't put it back, I just can't be sued if there's an accident, that's it.
We can't guarantee that in any way. Well, there's no way.
No, I'm not asking guaranteed, I'm just asking for you to not make me sign something saying that I'm liable for what we've put in.
As I said, we'll, we'll talk to Scott, Brad, what do you have, buddy?
Well, as you can see on our list, we've got, we've done quite a bit of stuff. Super Parks Building, we've been renovating that, we've got a brand new door on it, we're probably doing some more stuff. And John Pierman, he's wanting to add gas and water to one of those apartments, and he's wanting to know if he needs to pay some kind of water fee or gas fee.
Is it a new service?
It's coming off an existing service.
Will it need another meter?
But is he having multiple services to that existing one, or just the one?
Just the one. There's a one-inch line coming from Washington, goes underneath the sidewalk into the mockup building. If you have two services coming off a one-inch line, technically, you can consider that a main. So it could be a water tap fee. That's what me and Cody were talking about, so he could pay, I'm not sure what the water tap fee is, but gas, I wouldn't worry about it, but the water fee, I would do the water fee for John Pierman. But that's something we can talk...
But if, if you put the water in, you'll have to have another meter.
Yes, yes, he wants another meter.
Okay, if he wants, does he want another gallon meter?
To new service then.
Then there's a tap fee for both of them.
Yeah, because it would be a new service.
If you install a new meter, there is a tap fee.
Well, I know. And, see what else I can add. The back leak that's causing the pumps to run more than normal, we had precision leak come and he could not detect anything. So, the bad news is, we may have to tear up part of Jefferson Street, right there at Jefferson and Locuston. Because we think when we hit that line, the vacuum, it sucked a rock through that line and it hit a tee, so we think it's cracked that tee, that's why our pumps are running more than normal, so we may have to repair that tee out there in Jefferson Street. So hopefully that will cure the pump issue. And, I think that's it. I know there's a lot of stuff on here, but, the shelters, we're gonna start painting some of those, the pillars, trying to get some stuff looking nice for the solar eclipse.
Do you need a volunteer, Jeremy?
Sure.
Wow, I think your point is...
She threw you under the bus, didn't she, Lyle?
She does it all the time, all the time, yeah. And like Paul was saying, we've been scraping some roadways too, some of the roadways that have gotten pretty bad, especially South, if you drive down South Street from Jefferson to Madison, you can tell a big difference. It's actually a two-lane road now, so, but I think that's it. And, thanks for everything.
That's it.
Thank you.
Oh, I did forget one thing.
Thank you.